Kyoto, regular council meeting February ninth, twenty twenty-three, six P M. Call the board.
Hugby?
Yeah.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starzeman?
Yes.
Department.
Number three, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four, discuss and vote to approve all minutes for January twenty twenty-three.
I approve.
Hugby?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starzeman?
Yes.
Number five, discuss a vote to approve all January twenty twenty-threes for general fund. How much we pay all general fund bills?
Hugby?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starzeman?
Yes.
Number six, discuss a vote to approve all January twenty twenty-three bills from street and alley fund.
I'm with you to approve January twenty twenty-three bills from street and alley.
I'll second.
Hugby?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starzeman?
Yes.
Number seven, discuss a vote to approve all January twenty twenty-three bills for required department. How much we pay all January bills for required department?
Hugby?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starzeman?
Yes.
Number eight, discussion and appropriate action on approving and ordinance granting to public service company of Oklahoma, otherwise known as P S O, and Oklahoma Corporation, its successors, and assigns a non-exclusive franchise for twenty-five years to use the streets, alleys, avenues, ways, and other public places and grounds in the town of Kyoto, Haskell County, state of Oklahoma, for building, equipment, maintaining, extending, owning, and operating a system for the manufacture, transmission, distribution, sale, and control of electricity and communication circuits in and to the town and the public generally, and declaring an emergency.
This is where you come in?
Yes.
The board is your order.
Sorry.
Thank you. No, you're on. Frank Phillips was P S O, and I think you had a letter earlier, maybe from last meeting, that talked about the franchise and what the purpose of the franchise is. If you haven't, I'll go ahead and review that really quickly. A franchise allows us to use the streets and alleys to maintain service and provide electric service to the city. In return for that, we collect a franchise fee that we submit to the city. And I think you've had those, some of those figures, the franchise fee last year was almost twelve thousand dollars. You also save eighteen thousand annually on municipal street lighting because you have a franchise with P S O. And then, Fox, we also, you know, we remitted fourteen thousand dollars in sales tax, and Haskell County was a hundred and eighty-one thousand property tax and a hundred and three thousand in sales tax. This is just an extension or renewal of the franchise we've had for nineteen twenty-seven or something. I mean, we've been, we've served you all for, I think it's from nineteen, since nineteen twenty-seven, we've served Kyoto. The, what this does is, this doesn't approve anything tonight other than it sets in place an election for the people to vote whether or not they want to renew the franchise. We've taken the information, taken the forms and ordinance resolution and special election proclamation over to the election board. They've approved it in form. They look at it, and what they'll do is they'll hold the election for us. We pay all the costs for the election. We pay for the publications of the ordinance and resolution in the newspapers that you all are good enough to publish for us. We also will pay for the cost of the election if we're the only issue on the ballot, and we very well may be. So what you all would do tonight, if you approve this, would just allow the citizens to vote in May if they want to continue for P S O to serve them. And these are required, every twenty-five years these have to be done by constitution and statute.
Okay.
I'm looking, will you approve that?
I second it. Hugby?
Yeah.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starzeman?
Yes.
Number nine, discussion and appropriate action on approving a resolution authorizing the calling and holding of a special election in town of Kyoto, Haskell County, state of Oklahoma, for the purpose of submitting the registered qualified electors of said town the question of approval or rejection of an ordinance of the town, more particularly described as an ordinance granting to public service company of Oklahoma and Oklahoma Corporation, its successors, and assigned a non-exclusive franchise for twenty-five years to the use, to use streets, alleys, avenues, ways, and other public places and grounds in the town of Kyoto, Haskell County, Oklahoma, for building, equipment, maintaining, extending, owning, and operating a system for the manufacture, transmission, distribution, sale, and control of electricity and information distribution in and to the town and the public generally, and authorizing the mayor and town clerk to execute the resolution and special election proclamation and notice. There are exhibits of resolution and special election proclamation and notice.
And that's the second part of it. The ordinance was the actual agreement, what we would, what we'll do, and that we'll pay the franchise fee, and that we'll maintain the streets and, maintain our poles and lines. This is just documents, a call for the election. End of the, same, I think you, we've had a copy of the results.
Yeah.
And I appreciate you reading. Sometimes they punish me by making me read it since it's so long. Thank you for taking that for me.
I took what he's on for practice. I make most of the things up here.
Hugby?
Yeah.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starzeman?
Yes.
Number ten, discuss a vote to install a fence around the base of the water tower per D E Q for the amount of seven thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars sixty-one cents. We have been written up for this numerous, numerous, numerous times.
There's no way of getting out of it.
There's, we, it's got to be done, and it's for the safety of the town with the world situation that it is that we have to isolate that water tower from any type of vandalism, terrorism, or anything like that because water is a lot, the source of life, and we've got to maintain our water, and we've got to do this for the security of the town.
Is that much just for around the base, or we're not going to do it and, do you have a fence around it?
No, just for, just around the base.
Just around that base?
And it includes a twelve-foot gate to where we can have access to the, underneath of the tower. And it's a secure six-foot fence, the barbed wire, the barbed wire on the top, the security wire on the top.
That's not a very big fence, and it's that much, huh?
Pardon me?
It's not a very big fence though, really, and it's that much? That, that there's, it's that much to do that?
Yeah.
Who's doing it?
Pardon me?
Who's going to do it? Who's going to put the fence out? Is that a company?
Yeah, we've got a company that. Yeah, we've got a bid for this company.
Oh, so you, you've only had one bid, or you have any other bids possibly?
Yeah, those, Sharon.
Oh, I don't know, I have them, no.
I know Mike had them.
Mike's, oh, Mr. Ben, I got them.
D E Q is going to fine us if we don't do that. And it's been rocking on way before we got on the board.
Now I don't have them.
But no fence out there.
Are we planning on getting other bids to see if we can get any cheaper?
We can, I mean, we can, but we just need to move on it before D E Q, they only give us a certain amount of time. Venture D E Q is only going to give us fourteen days.
And they weren't, Doug Brand received the warning.
Yes.
And it never got done. And so they went after him. They got, when D E Q came in and helped, that's when they found, they found, the council found out, oh, wait, you guys have got a warning out there. And they didn't know.
It's kind of weird because usually you guys are really good about letting us know something like this ahead of time. And so I'm like, what happened? And I get you.
And the only reason D E Q didn't move on it is because we didn't have, nobody in the water department at that time. This was brought to our attention when the nobody was there, and they, and this last time they come out, and they gave us another warning saying, this is it, you better get the fence up before they start finding us.
So Lewis, you follow?
I'm going to follow.
Do you think that's a total nothing, a six-foot fence?
Barbed wire too, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's the barbed wire.
With the safety wire on top.
That's what D E Q's saying, that's what Mike's saying. I mean, we don't have to go with that bid, we can locate this amount. Doesn't, as long as we don't go, if we find somebody else and say somebody else is off, as long as we stay within that amount or lower.
But you can't spend too much time.
We can't go over the amount, or we can't spend too much time because we've got to get the fence up. We can do that, right, do we?
You can go, yeah, because you're not.
We're not, we're not saying we have to go with this company. We're just, we're just saying this is the amount that we've found so far. I just want to make sure, but I can say it that way.
You don't have, you don't have a person on here or anything, you're saying the amount of that, so you can do up to that amount?
Yes.
With that approval.
And we get somebody else in here, just follow your, you guys, follow your grid procedures.
And we got to do it fast, get things taken care of.
When can they come out to do this?
They're just waiting on us.
Can they come out tomorrow and do it?
Well, I don't know about that, I mean, you know what I'm saying, I mean.
Yeah, I'm just saying, how fast do they, is their waiting list ordered, you know, because a lot of places are, there's a wait.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll move this little saw fence around the base of the water tower, not to exceed the seven thousand one hundred seventy-seven sixty-one.
I second it. Hugby?
Yeah.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starzeman?
Yes.
Number eleven, vote to fix grinding noise on front end of police vehicle that Leah is driving.
The new one?
The new one?
You want that or you want me to? She was checking up on, on it and as far as whether it was under warranty or anything, it has stopped making that noise. I don't know if it was from the sand and stuff that they put down or the salt that there might have been. Yeah. She said today it wasn't making it anymore, so.
I did talk to the repair shop about that, and he informed me that the brake pads were not an warranty item. And he said probably, like he said, chances are it got a rock or something under it.
Well, it wouldn't be that much to fix something like that, so isn't that under the normal wear and tear of vehicle where you don't need to really vote on the cost to fix?
Maintenance, yeah.
I would see if it's just your brakes need to be fixed in that situation.
Yeah, we'd do it in the middle, but since it was a meeting?
Sure.
That's why we were deciding, plus we didn't know how much money it was, so I figure that's why Don stepping on there, base up was seriously wrong with it because we'd get a quote by then.
You can break down too.
That's what you thought was right.
No, I have the noise and all that.
All right, number twelve, discuss a vote to install a fence around the west parking lot of City Hall for the amount of seven thousand five dollars sixty-two cents.
Now, what's that fence for?
We were going to buy land to put the equipment on, and that fell through. Okay? So we decided, since the, that stuff, the equipment does not need to be sitting on anybody's property.
I agree.
Okay, it doesn't need to be sitting on ours. If Mike lived here, nobody's property. We're talking about fencing off this section right here to the concrete around to the back side of this building and leaving the drive-through open. So they'd have to come in through the drive-through this way and put in the equipment right up through here. Costs the city no money except putting that fence up. Install cameras to make sure, you know.
You actually already have cameras up there.
Okay, all right, well, all right.
My need to check to make sure that they're putting any equipment.
So that's what, that's what the story is, instead of buying a piece of land and putting that equipment, we're going to bring that equipment up here where it should be in the.
So the fence would be going, is it straight across and leaving that parking up there, or it going all the way?
No, we're going to cross this way, like at the corner of this building, across this way, and then right at the corner of this thing. So it would be like a little drive-through for this.
Yeah, I see. It's a, it's a bad idea for the insurance company to know that our equipment that we've got insured is sitting on personal property. That's, that's a bad thing. Financially, I think seven thousand dollars is a lot cheaper than us going and buying land and fencing it. So I don't know, I think it's actually a good idea because we've already got cameras installed back here. We may have to have the guy come out and adjust the cameras, but we've already got a security system back here in the back with cameras that would be sitting on there. I mean, as a citizen, I'm talking as a citizen, I mean, I think it's a good idea, I mean, it's to buying land.
When you look at seven thousand dollars, everybody goes, mm. And I get that, but you also keep in mind today's prices versus pre-pandemic prices. Back then, it probably would have been four thousand dollars, depending on the fencing, I don't know what you got, have there. And again, we'd like to have some bidding or whatever, but you, everything, look at the cost of the cars, you know. You could buy, one that was ten thousand is now a twenty thousand.
Oh, the price of chicken.
Price of eggs. You know, so that's why it's sticker shot for everyone. None of our, none of our pay's gone up, but yet everything has tripled in cost. This does stand up on my ends for me as well, but I would love to see some bids, but I'm not downing it. We crossed around that topic then. I think it's a good idea.
Like, so we can write that price, this is the one bid we have, I'm not just saying with that one person, but I'd like to get the equipment up here.
Where's the money coming from?
It'll, that money will be coming out of three different departments.
Well, the use tax, because you guys had a council meeting several months ago, right after we got the use tax, and that was one of the things you guys approved of, was buying land and a fence for the equipment to come out of that use tax money.
It's true, yeah.
Yeah.
This is just another alternative.
It's just a cheaper alternative.
Twenty-two thousand, or what did we, I can't remember.
We were thinking of buying a lot over here.
Seventeen thousand.
I couldn't remember.
And it was crazy.
And you would have had to fence the whole thing, here you are having to fence. That's fine, so, so it was approved out of the use tax. If y'all want to change your mind on that, that's fine, but it was approved to use that use tax money, which is still general fund money. I mean, you council got to remember that that use tax money, we may have moved it to a separate bank account, but we only did that so that we would have a savings account.
So we can take part of it out of the streets and alley and all this?
If you want to.
I mean, we can do it that way too, right?
So the use tax is still general fund money, it does not require additional approval, it's still general fund money to be used. We just put it over a savings account so that it wouldn't be getting checks written on it, and we'd be able to have more control of what it was being paid for. So y'all need to remember that, it's not, it's not an entity like street and alley.
So would you transfer this money into the separate entities where, where this would be utilized for each department? And then take it from that?
It's a checking account.
Or would it be, just go ahead and take it out of that?
If they want to use the use tax, we can write a check out of the use tax account. If they want to say, well, we're going to.
Separate it.
If they want, that, they, you can decide that though, you don't have to vote on that tonight because it's general fund money. I guess that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Is you don't have to vote which account it comes out of, out of this, because use tax, whether, because use tax does not require different approval than general fund. So y'all just need to decide you're going to do it, and then when it comes time to pay the bill, you tell Sharon how to pay.
Say it, okay. But what you were saying, Greg, we could do it the general fund way, or we could separate it and put it in the sewer, a little out of the sewer, a little out of the, I don't know about the street alley, the water's touchy about taking money out.
Yeah.
I mean, you just can't touch the water department's money on nothing.
Yeah.
But since that equipment is used for everything, what we're talking about.
Yeah.
You know, we can, we can divide it up that way or kick it out of this other way, is what Sharon's saying.
But y'all don't have to decide that tonight, I mean, y'all just need to vote.
So the money that we had talked about buying the land, was that a grant, or was that just money that was stuck back?
No, that was money we were going to spin out of pocket.
Out of use tax account, that big check that we got.
And we were going to have to put a barn down there and all that. Okay? You know where I'm going with this, okay? So, and this way the equipment's safe, it's up here, and it's the cheapest way. And you know what, years down the road, it, it might change, but still, what would hurt to have a fence? I mean, the police cars are here.
Yeah.
I mean, no matter what, it'd still be benefit for some of the purpose.
And like you said, you already set the security, you got cameras on the front, you got cameras on the back.
Yeah, and we're not spending a bunch of money.
Not too many people utilize that either, it's parking and that, miles up the front and the side, so it, it usually sits empty anyway.
It is kind of wasted space, I mean, y'all, y'all don't really use it much.
That's where we're really full, I park back there, but it, maybe once you go.
I mean, we might get thrown on a meeting, but we'll just squeeze in here or something.
We stayed parking versus a lot over here that he would sell us for cheap.
Parking, yeah.
Well, we might want to put the deuce tape back there too.
Huh? Yeah, we'll put the deuce tape, but we'll have to figure out what to do about that. The deuce tape needs to come up here too. Put it in a building or something, we're going to have to do something with it so they don't break into it. But we do have a tape bought, and it is being painted, and it's used. And we paid a hundred dollars for it, but it got approved on agenda.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, so we just haven't built it up yet or did anything.
And where you can locate it and make it utilized best for your needs too?
Yes.
I make most of the way to build a fence around the west parking lot.
I second it. Hugby?
Yeah.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starzeman?
Yes.
Number thirteen, discuss a vote to make repairs on the white Ford Explorer unit for the amount of one thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars fifty cents to reliable transportation and auto repair and stability.
I'm looking, we, accept the unit.
I second it. Hugby?
We're trying to move this car back.
Yeah.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starzeman?
Yes.
Number fourteen, discuss a vote to update and add what needs to be added to police department fine list.
What does that exactly mean, like a fine?
I don't know, whatever. It does something out?
How much?
No, it's not on there.
Oh, okay.
So we're going to go through there and add what's supposed to be on there, and then out.
Okay.
Did you put this on? Did you put it on here?
What we did while I was here was, was that we put an amount that if it was not printed and it was still a violation of law, there would be that amount. They had everything that's on the schedule of fines, and then at the last, they said any, anything on, in there would go with X amount of dollars.
So for example, like if we don't have robbery on our list and somebody committed a robbery, we'd be robbery at five hundred dollars or whatever the number is, or whatever we don't have listed. As long as it's a law broken. Or like cell phones, people talking and driving with their cell phones.
People that's, if it's on the list, then it would be whatever.
There's a lot of people that does that. A lot of people does that, talking, texting while driving, and I don't, I can't do that. But I know some people that does that.
What are we going to add?
Oh, I don't know, who was the one that was on there?
That's what I figured, if we put everything as far as the law in state of Oklahoma, that have to fill up the trump, what those books to.
So basically you need an updated version?
See if we can update it.
Yeah.
Would you be able to do that for us?
Well, we have to get it. I know, and then there's one that I'd like to have, be the texting and driving, and if they're going to comply with city ordinance that's not in there, you know.
Thank you, George. Well, George.
So do they need to provide y'all the list before y'all come vote?
Yes.
We need the current list, and you guys send, I can come up with an ordinance, I don't know, I have to do an ordinance because it's fire, and that's why we need to change the ordinance, so we'll leave the current list, if you can give me probably that, and I can add those things, and you guys will have to vote on what fines you want to change.
So they can't vote tonight because they don't have the list?
You can resolve to do it, but we can't change the ordinance until I get an ordinance to you so you can change it, so you can vote on it. I mean, you can, if there's a certain amount you want to, you can resolve that that's what you want to do, but I need it.
Like, like resolve, but like on this, like a.
Resolution. But I would still need that, and then an actual ordinance changing anything that we're changing, and then you would have to vote, vote on that new ordinance to change the laws. Does that make sense?
What are we talking about, the city ordinance, what are we talking about?
City ordinance, like burning trash, stuff that is not really written into a fine. You know, there's no set price on it, but there is an ordinance saying that you will be fined if you get caught burning garbage. Well.
You ain't allowed to burn trash in town unless.
No, you're not allowed, you can't burn, you can't burn garbage in the state of Oklahoma or California. It's against the law to burn garbage because of the ozone layer. We don't say anything about tree limbs, leaves, but that is in the ordinance, we're not supposed to do it. But it is against the law to burn household garbage in a trash can in the state of Oklahoma.
Yeah.
And that is a, a state law. You, yeah.
No, I didn't know it, but I mean, just like I said.
Yes, it's a state, it's a law. Not to burn garbage. Because, you know, the plastics and whatever chemicals or whatever else is in your garbage that you can't burn is supposedly eating away the ozone, ozone layers.
So we ain't allowed to burn anything in the, in the city limbs that have killed, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what the ordinance says, okay? But people burn their leaves, their, their wood, whatever, we don't have no problem with that because that's not hurting the ozone layer. It's getting that hood.
It's like having a fire, like having a cookout.
But what we're, what George is talking about is burning garbage. There's a lot of people that are burning garbage, household garbage food out of the kitchen.
Cans, tire sauce cans.
Yes, and people complain about it.
Because it stinks.
Neighbors complain about it.
Because of the smell.
The smell. And I don't know why they're burning in the first place, because they have trash pickets. Because it's the water department bills them, but they're still burning their household garbage at the house. Like, I don't, I don't understand it myself. I don't know, I mean.
That goes along with tires and.
And it was incidents with George.
Tires are, yeah.
No, tires you can't burn at all.
I was sharing to kids with burning tires in a night, and I had to.
Oh, no.
And it's illegal to burn, it's like up to a ten thousand dollar fine.
They didn't know, I didn't know.
Oh, you didn't know that?
I said, really? I said, well, we'll tell them, you know, we'll let them know we're not burning no more. Because I had no idea either.
And that's what, somebody called and complained about somebody burning garbage. George went out there, or George went, George called me and said, I can't find what the fine is on burning garbage. I'm like, I don't know either. And George says, well, I'm just going to write them a warning or tell them. I said, yeah, just warn them because they probably don't know they're not allowed to burn garbage. And that's what George did, but if this person keeps on burning it, where does George go to? Because we don't have a set amount on that city ordinance.
And you've got a good list of what you would have to change, so it would be pretty.
And no, it wasn't me that complained, okay? I just want to get that all straight, I had nothing to do with this one. It was a person living next door to somebody. So.
So.
All right, so you need to get a list going.
Until we get the information that we need, we need to, need to table this.
Can we not, can say like there's little tiny little ones like together, can you not do just like in general, like say, like say phone calls or texting and driving?
Specific ordinance.
Like, do like four or five from together, would that work for you, Leah?
Yeah, I'll do that and see what they need, and then we'll kind of try to, it'll depend on. Yeah, I'll do it, see what they need, and then we'll kind of try to, it'll depend on some stuff. But yeah, all right, I mean, y'all are agreeing it needs to be done, so you can vote to have me and then we're do it, and then I'll bring it back to you, the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, and then you can give notice to that, because we often give notice to new fines and stuff, and have a meeting to approve that.
Okay.
And Don had a good suggestion, it just have a other line, if it's not listed, it's two hundred dollars or three hundred dollars. If it's not listed, as long as it breaks, yeah, as long as it breaks an ordinance or a law, I mean, that was a good one suggestion.
That's what we did, well, that's.
It'd be easier.
If you miss one.
It gives them a guideline.
Little stuff, though.
That's if you miss one.
It's gonna be a certain amount, but if it's something tiny.
Yeah, that just covers you if you miss anything on your list. As you guys put your list together, that's a cover for you until you can get back to the council to add something. So that just keeps you, gets you an amount to charge for now, and let's say you find that it's something big that's not listed, you at least get to charge them something, and then you gotta, you know, to put it back on the council to approve for a different amount. It's just a, it's just a catch for you, a catch-all for you.
Is that kinda like, I mean, in a city or Tampa, they have, it says, all speed limits, twenty-five miles per hour unless posted otherwise. So you've got a default.
Right, so you got a default until they can get it fixed, if they forget one.
So I approve that we, whatever you guys send.
No, uh, we're gonna make a motion to, to update it, but we'll have to, want to get the information, ordinance and everything. When, through Joy, then we'll have to have another meeting to vote on it.
Yeah, once, because that way we can actually post the ordinance and everybody has notice of it to come to a hearing when they vote for it, yeah.
So you gotta hold that sharing?
I'll second.
Heckabee?
Yeah.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
I guess. I just come in the middle of it.
Yeah, we're not going to change anything right now, so, just to start.
Well, I actually come at the most, and it's.
Uh, number fifteen, new business?
I have something, oh, okay. Okay, I've noticed when I go downstairs into the inn and before you get to my right-hand side, you have a sign that says, do not dump. But there's some dumping there, there's garbage there, there's, you can tell, I don't know what is in there, like clothing.
Down there where Sharon is?
Yeah.
That, that's used to be dumping, they started dumping garbage in there, and you can't dump garbage either.
Right, but they're dumping, they're still dumping stuff over there, right in front of something, I'm like, oh, it's kind of funny dump there.
Been there.
No, I think that was pretty funny.
But it, it was cleaned up before this, and then it's.
Somebody dumped it, yeah, and, yes.
Yeah, because it was real nice, and then it's like, oh, come on.
Well, we found out who dumped it, and they thought they could dump it there, that person doesn't live here anymore.
Oh, okay.
So, and that person didn't have no water.
It's been a while since I've seen it.
It's just the leftovers.
Remembered to be something.
We're gonna have to go do something with it, we're gonna have to bury it, something, pull it off, because it's someone's metal.
Get some kind of cameras to see who's doing the dumping.
Well, they already know, they already know, so never mind.
Yeah, it's already been taken care of, they're already gone, that stuff, they moved out of town.
Well, I just thought, I just remembered, it's been there for a while, it really has, I just thought, I remembered it.
Yeah, that one was broke down, too, so I couldn't do nothing, couldn't scoop it up and nothing, because the bag was gonna break down.
That's why the sign went up.
Wrong, right, yeah, I saw that, I'm like, oh.
Yeah, yeah, the park's in. I haven't been to Oklahoma yet, but it's in, because of the cold weather.
Yeah.
Anybody else want new business?
What is this, are we on the water side? No, but, well, the sewer side, that's just the water side over there, right? That'd be KPWA?
Yeah, that's water.
Okay, I'll wait.
All right, number sixteen, old business?
Um, yeah, I have, um, personally bigger, bigger hole in front of Ellen's Smoke Shop right there. It's getting bigger, and I know the weather has been a pain, but it is, I watched somebody almost trip in it, it's getting a little dangerous. Um, there is quite a bit of walkway there, people coming through, I'm just giving it, just don't forget.
I did tell Mike. We're just waiting on the back, backhoe. I just wanna let you know, I did talk to Mike, and I told Mike to go down there and check it out.
Love you when I go down, just.
Yeah, but I did tell Mike, okay, from the last meeting.
All right, number seventeen, adjourned?
I'm adjourned.
Second.
Heckabee?
Yeah.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
All right, moving on to KPWA, regular meeting February ninth, twenty twenty-three, six thirty-five P M. Call order, call roll.
Heckabee?
Yeah.
Burton?
Goff? Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Number three, discussing vote to approve all minutes for January twenty twenty-three?
I say we approve.
Second.
Heckabee?
Yeah.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. And report discussing vote to approve all January twenty twenty-three bills for water department?
I'm gonna vote to approve all January twenty-three bills for water.
My second.
Heckabee?
Yeah.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yeah.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Number five, discussing vote to approve all January twenty twenty-three bills for sewer department?
I say we can.
Second.
Heckabee?
Yeah.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yeah.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Do these need to be on?
That's what I said, they don't go in water, yeah, they don't go in water.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Somebody tell me deal, buddy.
That's okay, it's better safe to be on there.
Better be safe to be so, than sorry.
I didn't wanna top out all that.
Is that right, George?
What?
We don't need those, that we don't.
To re-read.
Unless you're gonna use KPWA money to do it, you don't, and, yeah, no, this is a public service, yeah, yeah, no, it has nothing to do with water, right?
So which cover, no, you cover your say.
And you always cover yourself, it better be safe, it's sorry, sorry.
You don't have to read it, you just vote to remove six and seven.
Oh, okay.
Uh, moving on to number eight.
No, no, we gotta remove it first, remove six.
Make a motion, remove item six and seven on the agenda for KPWA.
My second. Heckabee?
Yeah.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Moving on to item eight, discussing vote to install an overflow pipe on the water tower per DEQ for the amount of nineteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is another item that we were written up on.
And you just found this out.
The overflow coming off of the tower, it just coming right out of the bowl about four foot. And if it, God forbid, the water bowl was to overflow, all that water would come down and wash everything out.
It's the same thing with the fence, the DEQ wrote us out. So, and that's the price to climb up there and hang off the side of the tower, water tower, and have someone put it in.
Talking about PVC pipe, schedule eighty like PVC or?
No, it's, no, it's steel pipe.
Steel pipe. Per DEQ. Can't get around it.
Why wouldn't that install in the water towers, too?
But I wasn't, sorry, Greg, but I wasn't back there for a minute, I don't know, I don't know why they didn't do it.
Nineteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars, just for, just for an overflow pipe.
Yep, crazy, huh?
Yes, man.
I talked, I, I was chucking that dip, I said, Mike can't do that, he's like the old me, can't do that.
And this is through the same people that came and cleaned the tower.
Tower, the tower, same people we used.
To clean it.
What they'll do is, the overflow is coming out of the middle of the bowl. What they'll have to do is they'll have to come over to one of the legs, and then down the leg with the pipe. And then, that's as far as they're gonna go, they'll put a, a screen cap, safety device to keep rodents and stuff from getting up in that pipe. We just have to pour a pad at the bottom of that pad, that pipe is all we, uh, all we're required.
So we just come from the top, from the tower, down to the ground, and that's as far as it goes, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And you gotta pour a pad underneath it, or to keep?
Just to keep it from washing away, if, if it does overflow.
The DEQ requirements.
Have they never required it before?
Yeah, they've been required it, they, they've been required.
Warning, we didn't know about it, Doug had, Doug, same situation.
I'm just saying, I think it's never had one, I wonder why they've never said before.
And the water tires not having to pour that pipe on for a long, long time.
But the council was never informed about the warning, not even the ones before them, and they just kept extending that warning. And so whenever the DEQ had to get involved, come help us.
And we do have one more write-up from DEQ, and we're gonna talk to them, and it's on the sewer out there at the lagoon, but we're gonna discuss this here in new business here in a minute, okay?
But they're, but they're old warning.
It's not slow, you know, out there holding the water, it's finally straight up and down, we have to have it slow.
They will just always extend it out.
Yeah.
I mean, isn't one that would continue to be extended?
Oh, they've been extending them for a couple of years, so I think they're done, I think they're done, aren't they extending, they're just saying, fix it now.
Basically, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, they're done.
We've had too many extensions, I guess.
Some of the same extensions that they just always extended.
And DEQ come down because of the phone calls. Whoever was calling in after Doug left.
And so the DEQ came down.
DEQ, they've been down here hot and heavy on us, and we've found out so many things that were wrong, you don't even wanna know. And we've got it flipped around the way it's supposed to be, the water's good, it's done the way it should be done after years.
So it's a good thing somebody called, because the council became aware of what was wrong, and all the problems. So it's a good thing that somebody called in on them, because it caused them to be aware of what was going on, so they can fix.
Being this long, how much it costs now versus when we could have had it fixed then, would have cost us less, like, less total.
Yeah, I agree with you, but we didn't really have the extra money to do what we can do today as years ago. Yeah, I mean, I mean, you would have been scraping it, too.
On us either, we would have been aware and been in touch, we could have been in a better situation, possibly.
It could.
Yeah, so we know, um, it is what it is.
But that's only three write-ups we got from DEQ, right? So, this is why we're moving on it.
What, what, you know, what type of patch that is? This big around, is this big around?
No, it's either thirty-five, four or six inches.
Uh, if that's steel, I wonder if there's any welder around here to do that, the only thing they would need would be
But what need DEQ's blessing, but what it would need DEQ's blessing, if you just picked any old welder off the street, I bet it would need DEQ's blessing.
Yeah, I get what you're saying. Who did this, this is wrong, and then they're gonna say, could you not use the.
And you're playing around with our water tower.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not sure, but we're playing around with our water tower when we're doing stuff.
Does DEQ so? Okay, what this is, uh, the, the amount that, uh, this water tower expert quoted is, uh, four-inch Schedule forty steel overflow pipe. New overflow pipe shall be extended from an existing overflow pipe to a level of twelve to twenty-four inches above grade, which is above ground. New overflow pipe will be angled away from the foundation and equipment within a flapper screen combination. All piping will be braced and welded to the exterior of the tank, owner is responsible for a splash pad.
You gonna answer your question now?
Oh, I was just gonna ask, so, but DEQ at this point has foregone any fines as long as there's remediation soon, forever.
Yes. And they know that every time they've done something, you know, we have other issues, that we moved on it, you know, moved on it quickly, as fast as we could. So, DEQ is like, okay, good, good.
It's been a blessing, was that actually a blessing that somebody called, I mean, it's been a blessing that somebody, that they came aware of all this stuff, so.
So we're gonna, are you gonna vote to this as the cap that you would be, are you gonna go with this person, you didn't put it in here?
Yeah, we're gonna go with that, because they're water specialists, whatever, tank people.
We don't have any other way to get any of the bids or anything like that, right?
These are the same people that Doug used to clean the water tower.
No.
I thought you, you do have bid procedures, you have to get some, don't you? I think you have that, and, yeah, anything over five hundred dollars had to have some of your bids. But if you can't find anybody.
Uh, we'll take the fine, we'll take the fine.
No, no, not.
Because I don't know what, because this is the same people we've always used.
I know that, but you put that in, that if it's over five hundred dollars, you have to have a bid, even if you're else or not.
I, you have bid procedures, I don't know what that amounts or what they say.
I know, I've never seen the procedures, since I've been here, I've never seen the procedures. I know that they normally, they, the council, even the ones before these guys.
Is this guy on the, is this guy on our, on our pay, on our appeal or anything that we?
No, no, he does, so, since, since I've been, yeah, since I've been here, I mean, the council, no matter who it's been, they've always been good about getting bids and getting quotes, and so we've never really had to pull the bid procedures, because they've always gotten bids. They've, they've just always done it, not, even the people before these people and the people before them people, they always did it. So, so I've never had a need to even look up what the bid procedure was, because they always did it, even on little stuff.
And I get why you're using people, because they've worked on it.
No, I have no favoritism, I don't care who we use.
It's not a favoritism, it's just that you're, these people are aware, they're reasonable priced, and they're, they're aware of the tower that they have now, because they've worked on it. I get that, but I was just wondering, because we're doing it with the other one, why aren't we, are we gonna do the same with this? That's all I'm asking, is we're gonna go to this amount, like we did the last one?
All right, we'll just table it.
No, we're not, I didn't say table it.
Well, we can't, we can't do it.
Than this bid is what we're saying.
Oh, no higher, okay.
That's what I'm saying, then get the bids, and then you can do the, you know, do it, like you did the other one. Like, you're in the same problem as the other fence problem, you should, it's the same problem, we're gonna fix it the same way.
But then we'll have to take the bids, the sealed bids, and open them, we'll have to have another meeting, tell them, yeah, this is gonna go down, right?
It definitely, I don't know what the bid procedure, I have to look them up, but, um, and it, and you may have separate ones for if it's an emergency or not. If it's an emergency, you may, you would probably have less good requirements.
Requirements on it, yeah.
If it's being DEQ stuff and everything, this is gonna be one of them deals that we're gonna be, no matter what.
I mean, it's gonna be fifty, sixty thousand dollar fine.
It's gonna be a lot cheaper just to get it done and be done with it.
But I understand what you're saying, I don't wanna break the law, I know you're, you're just trying to cover my butt, I get that.
But you're, you're not talking, you're not talking a thousand dollar fine.
No, you're talking fifty, sixty thousand dollar fine over nineteen thousand.
Look, they've been hollering at us for years and years, like it appears that we're saying.
But they've been doing extensions.
Gonna come down and find us tomorrow.
Yeah, they've been getting.
I don't know, they did that to us a while back, they, they gave us fourteen days.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's because they've been giving so many extensions, they've not been finding us, they've been nice, and they've been doing it, and doing it, and doing it, I think they've just had enough.
Yeah, well, and I understand that, but what I'm saying, if we're being more than that many times, it's down to fourteen days, and these people don't know about, they've been on there for two years, so they, so they ain't coming, I don't see them coming down tomorrow giving us no fine.
They don't care that they're the council.
There's like, other ones have been here longer, did they say anything to you about this?
They don't care that they're the council.
Doug say anything, so it's been more than the two years.
But what, if you did it, if you showed them that you have it on the agenda, that you are working on it, you made.
Almost six.
But they've been told years and years that we've been working on it.
I've been on there almost six.
I don't know.
I don't know either. I'm just trying to get.
You're asking, of course, it's nineteen thousand, but I'm. You guys can afford the nineteen thousand, but not thirty-five.
All right, we'll, we'll, okay, well, okay, this amount, if we find somebody cheaper. We'll, we'll call around, we'll get Mike to call around and see who else can, is okay to do water tires?
If you can find somebody, that's the question.
But Joey's gonna look at your bid procedure to see if there's anything emergency in there too.
Yeah.
I just never had, I have never had a reason to look at them, because they're a bid proc, y'all always done bids, except for this case, you guys are just wanting to go get it done, but y'all have always done bids before y'all, and.
But this is public trust, so.
I'm being honest with you, that's why I'm like, no, no bids, I'm so used to you, I'm getting them.
Bids, yeah.
So it's kind of, that's why it's kind of weird to be out a little bit.
Did DEQ provide you anything in writing about?
Oh, yeah, there's, there's, we got a letter saying that.
What is it, one of those letters saying? Did they deem it an emergency or a critical or?
I think there was even certified letters in that office in there too, that had been coming in for a while. DEQ sends, sends certified letters.
They didn't send certified letters, it's gotta be done then.
And I think the only reason they didn't move on it, the fourteen days, 'cause they knew that we had so much other things going on. Getting a licensed person and everything else, so now we've done what they wanted over that side, we got our water straightened out, we got our sewer straightened up. Now they're coming after the other stuff that has already been previous written up, saying that fence, that water, and the levee. That is next, the levee, because it needs to be sloped back, 'cause it's, 'cause I guess the rain or whatever after years, it makes it more straighter. Well, it's supposed to have like an end bank and nine, what is it, how many degrees?
I think it's three or one.
Three, one, or whatever, so we're gonna have to get that cut, cut, that's next coming, we're, we're written up for that.
So.
But under state law, you're good, I think it's over twenty-five thousand that you have to take bids. Depending if it's an emergency or if it's considered construction, um, but I'd need to check, make sure you don't have it in your ordinances that restricts it, restricts it, 'cause I think. It's okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I think you have one for emergency, and I know, I know they had to vote for one for a limit, 'cause.
Yeah, we went through this before, I should go pull it back up.
Exactly, yeah, I think we're not, yeah, you're right. But you'll, this, not put it in, and again, you're showing that you are working on it, maybe they'll, if you're ready to find that work, you do it.
Your finance person, I would like to, I mean, I'm a finance person, I'd just like to see them get it done, because this is cheaper than the fine. So, but that's their call, and they need to stay within the law and do what the law is providing, but I.
But within Oklahoma law.
So there you go.
When did DEQ come down here, just? What, trying to find y'all's ordinances, but.
Two weeks ago.
Yes, two, three weeks ago.
Two or three weeks ago, DEQ came back down, so it's, it's not like we, we're sitting on it, you know?
We can do like we did on others, and if we don't, uh, come up with some other bids, we'll roll for a period of time, but.
Just don't go over that amount.
Not go over that amount.
Exactly.
Is that a new, is that a fairly new bid, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So that's probably still good.
That was printed the eleventh of January, so that's a little over a month. Not quite, not general.
Well, it's understanding that we need to move on it, not taking months to get the bills or something.
And, and, and just to clarify, 'cause I know that gals have had it, but just to clarify, when we say that it's been there before, we can't say that the council before, not in two thousand nineteen, didn't know about this, we can't say that the sewer people didn't tell the council about it, we don't know.
And we don't know about the warning, or why wasn't it up there in the first place?
Yeah, we don't know where it come, we just know that it's been there, but people on this council, even the two older ones, they, they weren't aware of it. So, but we're not saying that it was a specific person, that's the reason we say it's just old that wasn't aware of, it wasn't brought to the attention.
But you just know where you are today, and you are.
That's right, we know where we are today, and it was, it was a good thing that somebody brought this to their attention.
Well, that, Jeff is involved with DEQ more because of what went on, I mean, he's.
We need to move on, so, we've, based, if we don't have any other bids by that time.
There you go.
How, you know, two weeks or?
Less than two weeks, if you can do it, is what I'm saying, you don't have, it doesn't have to take that long. You get a couple people can't do it, then I can't do it, okay, we're going with this guy, but you've tried and tried to get bids or something.
You gotta look at how long it takes people to get out to give a bid too.
Yeah, it took that, it took them a little bit to get out.
Exactly. If you do it, you do it two weeks, you might as well just, you might as well just say, go ahead and use these people, because that's what's gonna happen.
Yeah, and if you're getting close to a bigger fine, then that would qualify as an emergency. I mean, I don't know when DEQ, I can't say DEQ's not gonna walk, walk in tomorrow and give us that fine, because they only give you so many days to fix it. Right. He's just been looking the other way. And, and I know that he did that for, on the other stuff, but then he did walk in and told us fourteen days, uh, Cheryl, fourteen days that they're gonna start finding us if we didn't have a full, uh, licensed person.
It's a daily fine too.
Yes, and what was it, it was like, uh, for that license, it was?
I don't know.
No, it was like, no, they were gonna bring somebody in, it was gonna be, they were gonna bring somebody in from the outside, and it was like five thousand dollars a day. And having their people sit in here and run that water and sewer, boy, we were freaking out, you know, what kind of pressure we're gonna go under.
To me, to me, to me, I think this is more or less an emergency, like everybody says, you know, 'cause I don't think the town can really afford no fifty, sixty thousand dollar fine.
If you vote, make sure you vote separately that you also think it's an emergency if you approve to do it.
Exactly.
I make a motion, I think it's an emergency to do it.
And you have the money?
Then when you, since, I mean, since we got the money to do it, we get it done, 'cause I mean, like I said, I don't, I don't say the town wanting to pay no fifty, sixty thousand dollar fine.
Yeah, I just want to tell DEQ, yes, we do have approved them. The, to let them go away for a little bit.
Really, I get it, I get it.
My second is.
You have the money and the water?
Burton, I mean, not me, Hecabee, sorry. Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starzman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
I make a motion, we install the water pipe, overflow pipe for nineteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Within emergency, right?
Within emergency, I was waiting. You, you, you vote on the motion and you vote whether or not it's an emergency, but the emergency has to be a separate vote.
We've already said.
Okay, yeah.
Do you second that, anybody?
I do.
Hecabee?
Yeah.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starzman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Number nine, I make a motion, we do the same as we did on the city side with the fence around the water tower for the amount of seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars, sixty-one cents.
Second.
Hecabee?
Yeah.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starzman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Number ten, discuss on fixing sewer lines at four oh eight northeast Stockton and six, due to house not being inspected in twenty twelve. Anybody know anything about this, I don't.
Each page you wrote down?
Oh.
From what I was told, that this is, this was the city project deal.
Do I get it?
A city project deal, where they brought in them housing deals back a long time ago. Yeah, and they went in there and something about putting in a smaller pipe to a bigger pipe or?
Where are we talking about anyway?
The sewer house.
Oh, for us, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know, okay.
And it's.
Four, four-inch pipe under the house and then loaded, dug the sewer, and put it into a three-inch pipe with the sleeve.
They messed it up, messed up the sewer all the way around.
That's when Doyle Lynn brought in the, the, the mobile homes.
Yeah, the mobile home deals.
Yeah.
Yeah, he said, uh, Noel Michaelroy is supposed to went inspected.
And it wasn't ever inspected, so.
Okay, so, so what we need to do?
Fix the sewer line.
Okay, I know there's been a problem, I've, I've been trying, Mel, you know that.
Are the, did repairs been done already?
No, that's a, that's a quote, yeah.
That's the quote on what it's gonna cost.
And who's doing this?
Leo Perry. Last and plumber from Stater.
Okay.
And I, I make a motion, we get it fixed.
My second. Go ahead, I'll look you over, Dawn.
Dawn? Okay, Hecabee?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starzman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
All right, number eleven, new business? I've got some new business.
Oh, yeah, we got some new business, we're trying to tell everybody.
The city of Kyoto has received an OWRB ARPA grant. This is a one hundred percent grant for a million dollars. This grant can be used for the wastewater system. We will be using the grant to complete the land application system near the wastewater lagoons. This is a DEQ consent order item and must be completed. If there, if there are grant funds left over, left after bidding and construction of land application system is complete, we'll be u, we will use the remaining funds for other wastewater items that need to be replaced or repaired. The engineers and city personnel will meet to discuss what those top priorities are, funds available for.
That's the good part that I'm talking about.
Yeah.
About that grant.
That she was talking about, that's.
On what grant?
Pardon me?
On which grant? The grant that you.
Yeah, the, we, this grant here that we got for a million dollars.
That's three's been going at it, but, but that grant.
Wasn't that already supposed to be fixed once before?
Huh?
Wasn't that already supposed to be fixed once before?
What?
The lagoon.
Yeah, it's one of those. I think, I think that that lagoon, I think the lagoon actually ended up on the agenda at one time, but there was no money. Was back when I first started coming in, I mean, it's when the count, when the count went red, red, when the count went like, red.
I thought we'd already had a, I thought we'd already filled out for a grant to fix that one time before.
The, um.
I think there was and everything, but we never did have all the paperwork.
It was that, it was that guy. Yeah, it was the guy that we had hired, I don't know his name, it don't matter what his name was, we had a, we had a grant writer, and it just didn't happen.
Didn't do anything.
Yeah, you know who I'm talking about, isn't it, but we don't need to mention the name, but yeah.
Yeah.
No, we don't have to.
But that's good, so our other DEQ warning can be paid back for this one million.
We're gonna talk to DEQ and see if they'll back off that one, since it's gonna be a grant.[1678.41]